All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Public Utilities Commission. Today's Thursday, September 11, 2025. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Public input? Do you have any? Our correspondent is Kevin?
Yes.
Okay. I would accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of August 14, 2025.
Go move.
And, um, let's see, there was nobody absent. Any, uh, any discussions? See, now, if I remind, is all in favor, say aye.
I did, I did have a correction.
Okay, please.
So, um, for the meeting minutes from July 10th.
Yep.
Uh, to approve the minutes from the special meeting of July 10th, like, I think special needs to come out. I think it was just a regular meeting. July 10th was a regular meeting, not a special.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm serious, David, I don't think we've had a special meeting.
Just take the word special out.
Okay.
So, on, on the next page, there was one other thing.
Yep.
On, under new business, sixty-seven, sixty-nine Greenwood.
Mm-hmm.
We gave an eighteen hundred gallons per day and, and it needed to be adjusted by what the existing homes were using.
Yep.
So I got an adjustment there from eighteen hundred to subtract five seventy-seven. That's what the existing usage is from the two homes. So the additional would be twelve twenty-three.
So, um, so that actually is not changed to minutes because we, we approved eighteen hundred, right?
We did.
But did, we didn't make a change. We're going to make a change this meeting, that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's.
So whether you're, we're doing it here or?
We'll do it here, yeah, because, because we already approved eighteen hundred gallons per minute, so we have to re-approve that or reopen it, approve a different amount.
And the motion said it was to be adjusted by the Public Utilities Director.
Oh, so it's adjusted.
Based on existing homes.
So sorry, adjusted, we don't need to do anything.
That's fine. I just want to report it.
Awesome. Yeah, just, uh, if you would, just, like, whatever document you use to record these, make the appropriate changes, so. Cause you're, you're adjusting it. We don't have to do anything about that.
Got it.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, so, I mean, I'll, I'll assume whoever, let's see, the special meetings, the friendly amendment, we'll take special out of it. Okay. Give it a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, financial report. Wait, give it that, what do you think?
Give me thirty seconds.
Okay.
One update. So.
All right.
The only thing I will talk about is it'll take twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six is we don't have the actual bill yet, but Tom talked to, uh, Danbury. And it's looking like the twenty-five, we think it's the twenty-five bill. It's gonna be one point two million, but it's been running like nine hundred thousand and one point one. Until we get eyes on it, we don't really know why, other than supposedly we're a bigger percentage. Um, but we just didn't. Tom got that information. You haven't gotten the actual.
No, it's, it's a verb. It's a verb. Yeah, I was giving him some additional information. One of the items that we give them is the cost of our Paul Street Utilities. And they usually ask me for that, and obviously he's been way behind. So I updated him on that, and then he gave me the heads up that he thinks the, the maintenance is gonna be one point two. I said, one point two, why did it go up? Uh, their flows are down, which makes our percentage bigger and increased expenses. So I haven't seen the bill, so I can't really speak to it.
That's for two thousand this year?
I believe it was for the past year, because he owes us for, for this year and last year's.
What are you, what are you carrying the budget for?
We carried twenty-five million. We bumped it up in twenty twenty-six to a million fifty, so we're short, so we're short. But we don't, and we don't know. We, our twenty-four bill usually is the estimate for that year plus the true-up in the prior year. They're like three years behind on true-up. That could be a fourth part of it. Until we get the bill, we don't know. And I, when Tom told me last week, earlier this week, first thing I said is, we're gonna go through the thing in the final. Home, because like, you can't, it's hard when you take three years without real bills and then go back. It's like Danbury's version of our MIUs. So when we get the bill, we will go through it, but because Tom got that information, obviously we're passing along. But we'll see what it actually is when it comes in. So. But, other than that, we're two months ago, it's not, it's not a lot.
Um, any update with sewer capacity study? I'm sorry, invoices, my bad. Put glasses back on here, huh? Um, I would accept a motion to approve one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents for invoices.
Go move.
The second? Okay, for discussion, um, Tom, these, these appear to be the, the typical invoices.
Standard, yeah, Kovacs Construction and White Pierce.
I, I didn't see anything. Uh, that was weird. Any further discussion on invoices, anybody? That'll clarify mine, is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, do this at Seventeen Whitney Road.
Okay, I put Seventeen Whitney on, and Mike Mazuko's online. He'll, he'll discuss the project. Basically, we gave out the allocation more than two years ago, forty-two hundred gallons per day for the forty-two one-bedroom units. And since it's been longer than two years, I have him back before PUC. Okay, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Mike, and he can fill in any blanks.
Yeah, so what, uh, for the record, Mike Mazuko, good afternoon. So, yeah, so back in January and, uh, twenty twenty-three, we came in for a change in request, because the original project was thirty-two one-bedroom. We changed that to forty-two one-bedroom, and that was approved, I think, at the February ninth meeting. But since that time, while the project got denied, it was appealed, and that's why this great length of time has, has passed, which exceeded the two years. So we're back in requesting that reapproval for the forty-two hundred gallons, which is the forty-two one-bedroom units. And I, I do understand that the P and Z did approve it at their meeting on Tuesday, which was basically a court order because of the appeal. So I guess my only question is, is it, is it sort of a, I know there was like a allocation approval, and then there was supposed to be a final approval. I guess with P and Z being, or having approved the, the project, is, is it appropriate to ask that we go to final approval here? Or is there another, is the process still different, or do we need to do something else?
So Mike, with the way I understand it, I mean, we just approved the allocation. Um, may times it's done prior to the P and Z approval. P and Z's already done. Our part is just to reprove the allocation.
Okay.
Considering we've already approved it once for forty-two, I don't see any issues. Um, so with that, I make a motion that we approve, uh, forty-two gallons per.
Forty-two.
Forty-two hundred gallons per day for the sixteen, excuse me, Seventeen Whitney Road project.
Sorry.
For a second, any further discussions?
Yeah, uh, is there the forty-two hundred, was that taken in consideration? What was allotted for that property originally, or?
It wasn't, because I had, I didn't deduct it from our bank. I kept it in a pending until it was actually, came to fruition. So the forty-two hundred's gotta come off the bank.
Okay.
And there's a charge for that.
Yeah, there'll be an application and a charge and all of that. Sewer permit, water permit, sewer allocation. And I think my comments from two years ago, when they, they were in front of P and Z, would have, would have covered those items.
Okay. Okay, without further ado, we're in discussion. Try mine's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. There we go.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So what's the process from here on out? Is it just, uh, they, we have to come in for the actual permits?
Yes, yeah, we have, I mean, you gotta do what you gotta do with P and Z and their conditions from public utilities. It's a water permit, sewer permit, and a sewer allocation permit.
Okay.
And of course, EPW, you'll have your own, uh, road opening, uh, you know, encroachment permits, whatever.
Right.
Really, that's when you're gonna deal with us.
Okay, perfect. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Bye.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, okay, sewer capacity, you have to take study.
Okay, so we've discussed, uh, doing, um, an update to our sewer capacity. Um, as I've talked in, in past meetings, Ty and Von has done the last, uh, evaluation for us. And, um, I asked them to come in, to, to appear before the commission, just to, to give us an outline of, 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 uh, what they can do in, in terms of a, a capacity study. Um, so I'll turn it over to.
Which was Ty, which was Von?
Either one of us has a tie, so unfortunately. So, the, sign for yourself. Just trying to share my screen here very well. Send out the, uh, slides that we're gonna be presenting.
You forget about me?
Yeah, just give him my.
Yeah, it is.
I do have one more. Will that work for everybody? I'm trying to see if I can find the right screen and break that out to share.
Yeah, well, you ended up, too, right?
Yeah.
Tom, is this the, the one that was up in the industrial park? I can't see. Was this the one that was up in the industrial park? Uh, looks like it, yeah, that's the kind of. Yeah, because that would have been the one that acquired it.
No, 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 this is the Berkshire.
Yeah, we don't have one.
That's not that well, that's all, that's all.
Was that what that is?
Yeah, that's part of us.
Well, that is, right, okay.
I know.
The pumps are in the building that pit has got where the sewer.
Oh, I, I'm.
And then the pumps are down in that.
And there's one over there, but is that the bank? What is it?
That's paint, the paint.
The road station, okay.
Yeah.
I never noticed.
Yeah, it's surrounded hills, trees, or anything.
Yeah.
Okay, be standing there and.
Um, that's Pump Tree. Picture up here, that's the original Pump Tree.
I know right far as that right there.
That's a little.
Go back to the body.
There. There we go.
They were there.
Slide number nine, you're saying, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, one, yeah, sure.
Yeah, that's the old, old. Yeah. Pump fit, uh, with the hatch open.
Yeah, there's definitely some, some oldies, some goodies. Say something about. It's one of me and that, who's, figure out who it is. Standing there with Norman.
Where, where's Waldo? Did you hide yourself?
Not, not in touch with Eric Tom, the picture, I think he's.
Let me, let's do the back to us next, Norman. I saw that. Norman.
So, uh, thank you, Brownus, Tom, uh, Villa, us, the Time Bond, to take a look at what we had done back in two thousand six, two thousand nine for sewer capacity study. And just to give you a little bit more context, that was, that project originated, uh, when the former town planner, Steve Palmer, came to me and said, you know, we better get a grip on the sewer flow, because developers are coming in here, and we don't know how much the Public Utilities Commission will allow them to, to flow. And, and I knew that we were, back then, that, uh, we had issues with our capacity with Danbury, with the local agreement. So, uh, it was pretty monumental effort to get the original study done, and then the update in two thousand nine. I think you're gonna work on that for the past fifteen, sixteen years. And, but hopefully, it sounds like it's being effectively used, um, on a regular basis. But what, uh, what Tom asked us to do was just to take a look, uh, well, he indicated that things have changed a little bit over the last fifteen years. There's a lot of development up on six. There's, uh, uh, some II work going on down here that might change the way flows are getting to Danbury or to the, the, on the flows. But, uh, it was, seemed like an appropriate time to revisit the study that was done and take a fresh look at that. So that's, that's what brings us here today. So, yeah, there's the old Falls Station, familiar with that, former treatment plant. Uh, just to give you a little background on Time Bond, for those of you that don't know me, Andrew Morosky, was the, uh, Town Engineering Public Works Director here from Town Engineer from two thousand four to twenty fourteen, Public Works, uh, two thousand seven.
Uh, I didn't recognize you here either, like, in context now, I'm like, I, I met you, but.
Yes, yes. Kelly, uh, I worked with Kelly and Kathy, uh, years ago, Brad as well, so. Familiar face around here, although with gray hair, mine aren't as familiar. But, um, I'm, I'm with Time Bond, have been with Time Bond for about five years. Um, I am in the Middletown Connecticut office and senior project manager. I don't do a lot of studies like this, but because of my past connection with Bethel, I volunteered to be the, the intermediary, if you will. For people like Eric Moody here, is gonna be the one driving the study, and, uh, if we're awarded the work. So, um, the Time Bond have grown quite a bit since two thousand nine. We have over six hundred employees now. I think back then, probably closer to two hundred, three hundred. And, uh, we have offices all over, uh, New England now. We, we just opened our second office in New York. We have two offices in Connecticut, uh, Cheltenham is, uh, it's closer to Bethel, but I'm working out with the town office. And, uh, I think we're just opening, we're about to open a second office in Hampshire. So, but, uh.
In time.
Yeah, we're growing little by little. We're a full-service firm. We, uh, of course, do the water and wastewater, but we also have building services. Uh, we have the use, uh, civil engineering, dam, dams, uh, innovation studies, uh, you name it. Um, we have a lot of our, we're most well-known for, I think, for our environmental work, uh, brownfield studies and, and things of that nature. Uh, we have recently ramped up our transportation line in the last few years, adding some key personnel. We have a bridge section now, for example, and, uh, we're growing in that way. And Bethel knows us very well from our GIS work with the, with the assessor's office. We've been updating the parcels for years. And I think, uh, sort of already talked about the, what was, uh, done back in two thousand six and two thousand nine. Um, that was a, uh, a pretty monumental effort, like I said, looking at every parcel within the sewer district, to help define the sewer district, uh, that, that came after the study. Um, but that, that set the talent, uh, a good foundation for, for, to help plan all the sanitary sewer, uh, infrastructure, so. The, uh, data. Um, must have covered this by, too, like, sure. So, as you know, uh, here, we just spoke of agreement with, uh, Danbury, uh, has limits on the average daily flow, which is two million gallons overall, one point three, three million from Paul Street. Eighty thousand from Zercher, uh, five hundred, nine hundred thousand. And more. Uh, the flow is much higher, but the, uh, uh, let's see. Yeah, so you have to stay within those, uh, those averages and, and those maximum, those peak flows, otherwise that has, uh, impacts on, on your, your fees paid to the Danbury. We're just talking about that a little bit. Want to keep those under control as much as possible. Um, and we know that, uh, as I mentioned, that there has been growth, uh, throughout the town, uh, new sewers, uh, Stone Hill, I think, the last of the Stony Hill Sewer Project up built after I left. And, uh, so we're getting rid of septic systems, which is a good thing. And, uh, I know there's also lots of, uh, new, new construction up in Stony Hill with, uh, large buildings and, uh, developments that probably weren't envisioned back in two thousand nine or six. So that being said, uh, system-wide map, uh, not having been updated in sixteen years, probably a good time to take a look at that and, uh, give you a fresh look at where you are and how you will chart your path forward.
I'll go, sure. If you would, I know we're running a little bit behind schedule, just let me know if we're tight, okay?
Yeah, I think.
All right, just, just wanted to make sure I'm being concise, everybody's tight here.
This is my.
So ultimately, I kind of want to start from, you know, as Andrew's just talked about, or essentially before the first study that was done, what was the reasons behind it? Now, before that, I kind of wanted to go into what were the goals of the evaluation, once it was determined that it was necessary. So back in like two thousand and five or so, the goals of that report were to update the town's square collection mapping. Sounds like it was, you know, eighteen years or so outdated at that point, define service area limits, estimate current and future projections of wastewater flows within each, uh, service area. And only, here are those limits to the IMA, where that's certainly the driver behind it, of making sure that we're not encroaching off that limit, or at least being aware of if you're coming up to it. That way, you know, preventative, preventative measures before getting to that threshold of its ceiling. So that'd be identifying capacity concerns, and then ultimately taking actions to monitor, you know, sewer expansions that were going on, how many years, and minimize potential of its, its sequences. So that study, they started off with both GIS work in terms of updating this sewer maps, and also conditions assessments. And those were some sewers, to my knowledge, and the pump stations themselves, going there, evaluating the assets. From there, there was data collection that was done, and that was largely on the, your meter to Danbury and your, and your pump station, your system. Ultimately, when that was pulled together, then it came to analysis to define what your base flows are, Danbury. What are inflow and infiltration impacts, you know, in regards to your IMA, defining what your build-out potential is. And then ultimately, from there, being able to plan recommendations to the town in terms of, like, if there's certain improvements that need to be made, or what types of expansion can be accepted. So those were what was done back in two thousand and five or so. Around two thousand eight, two thousand nine, there was an update to your capacity evaluation that was adding in mapping of Stony Hill. There was also, the town had updated their parcel database, I think, around when the original study was coming out. So it took in that new data and incorporated it into the report, so ultimately updated map and build-out analysis. So our current understanding is valid, we're about good, you know, fifteen, twenty years or so in that timeframe, since the day of that report, there's been a lot of changes that have happened. There's been zoning changes, infrastructure has changed. I know that Town of Bethel has done an I-Nine site, which is inflow and filtration, which is great, and there's, there's been, to my knowledge, some remedial actions on sewer, on certain areas of the sewer that were more, that are problematic, which is great. Also, the Plum Trees Pump Station, that I believe the, the other report indicated that it was over capacity. That, that pump station that has been fully upgraded and it's in full compliance now. Infrastructure has been added since then, too. There's been more developments, and just looking through Google, there's continued development pressures by developers wanting to come in, wanting to expand and wanting to build. So our understanding is that the town's looking for a refreshed baseline, of figuring out what are the current levels of wastewater flows, what are the projections, where we at? And then from there, knowing that you're good with your IMA or where you're at with it, and then also this would be a, a development tool for the years to come, just like the old reports, or perhaps getting you the next twenty years. So our vision in terms of how we keep going about this study is essentially, we would look to utilize data from your I-Nine study that Lee Weston and Sampson had done.
Mm-hmm.
We'd look at to go through what data they had collected, if they had done monitoring of the sewers, flows from the pump stations. Use that data to the extent, the most extent that we can. If we do determine, you know, from reviewing that report, that there is a need for more data collection, the best opportunity for everybody to keep in mind is known health conditions in twenty twenty-six. That if there's any need for data collection, that's a great time for it, since you're, your worst conditions up there. And then we would look at build-out potential parcels, you know, certainly alluding to, you know, looking at articles, there's certainly discussions of parcel changes, you know, residential to, you know, building apartments, and such that nature. We would look at our GIS, uh, mapping that was done, incorporate the, any sort of developments that occurred since the last study. I believe Stony Hill is, I think, the area that would be the focus, by knowledge. And then from there, we would get into analysis. So very similar to before, looking at the sewer sheds, which changes have happened and now, how much they're utilized? And are there sewer sheds that would be better for expansion, to have more capacity available versus others? We would be looking to update your base flow conditions to figure out where you're at in terms of your IMA, what types of future flow projections you'll have. And then reaffirm your, your compliance with your IMA, and that'll lead to future planning. You know, just a little bit of, just, you know, why Ty and Von, our GIS department is quite familiar with your systems. And out to my knowledge, you've been working with you guys for a bit over the years. They know your systems well. They also have knowledge of the sewer systems itself and its history. And one thing that, you know, it does help is, we do have to base our old report already developed, which certainly helps in terms of all the tools and everything that might be developing that report are reusable. And we understand the issues that the town are currently experiencing and have been over the past few years, and certainly are currently in our project. So with that, I hope I wasn't taking it for much of the time, and we're open to discussion.
Yeah, I think, uh, a, a lot of what you said is, is, is spot-on. Um, I think for the study, I, I think we're more focused on flows, existing and projected, as opposed to, you know, a lot of in-depth on the infrastructure, which, we have the data. I think once you see the reports we have, we've upgraded some meters even since then. We've done some I-N-I, uh, sewer lining, so we can fit, you know, backfill in with some of that information. But I think that the main focus is capacity, and, you know, I have a lot of, I have a lot of the existing flows over the past, since I've been here twenty eighteen, and we have years prior. Um, so we can see where we're at with our three zones. And then, yeah, I, I have a lot of information I could, you know, I, I, get readily available to you. And then I think it's just kind of honing in on that, and then looking at all the undeveloped properties, and what might the future build out of those properties? You know, and, and the wild card is, uh, you know, zoning isn't always what the zoning is, when some of these other developments come in that could basically, you know, circumvent, you know, the zoning. So we've had several projects, you know, along those lines with the Affordable House. So that would be my kind of, you know, in a nutshell, I think, where we want to go.
Please go forward.
Certainly Stony Hill, but also downtown, there's been a lot of big cities. We have a lot of residential in this downtown as well.
Yeah, once we start looking at Stony Hill, those two large condo developments, we've kind of already accounted for them.
Okay.
So I don't think there's other, there's that many other big properties there, but it's kind of the downtown area where I think we're gonna see the most.
Yeah. Was there, um, just sort of backwash from the, or is that gonna go into the sewer tube?
Yes.
Did we account for that in our?
Not, not at this point. It's gonna be kind of a.
It's gonna be.
We don't know how much, really, at this point.
Okay, fair.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't have a, a volume.
We should probably come up with one during this whole thing.
Sure, of course.
Yeah.
I was surprised to see the development of the Grosse Street, where it used to just be a big parking lot outside of multi-story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Impressive. Signs.
So for really, the, the reasons you outlined in, in your next-to-last slide there is why I, you know, asked you guys to go, and, um, I guess next step would be, I would suggest, um, put to, put together a proposal for us, a cost proposal and a scope, and I think that might be something we would then want to consider at the next meeting.
Yep.
Then we can review the scope, and just as you mentioned, you know, love for not duplicating some of the services that, yeah, like you said, yeah, love that.
Mm-hmm.
Which is perfect.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Well, think, think low, guys, we just got a big.
You heard me, just says for another hundred, right?
Well.
Seriously, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll try to.
Okay, so we would, we go through the director's report.
Okay, a couple items real quick. Um, so, um, the, the other, um, property I looked at, um, which I didn't take into account, the forty-eight fifty, um, Nashville. We allocated eighty-four hundred gallons. Since we talked about, uh, the other property, sixty-seven, sixty-nine, what was their existing usage? If I deduct the existing usage from forty-eight and fifty Nashville, that, that number was about nine, nine hundred and forty-four gallons a day.
Are, are both of those buildings coming down? Because my understanding was they were talking about leaving those buildings.
We just told one of them they stay.
Well, yeah, so I, I wouldn't deduct anything until.
That, that's fine. We allocated eighty-four hundred. If, if they end up using less, that's.
Yeah, because they, they, they were talking about leaving one of the buildings.
Okay.
The same, the way they're doing the driveway or something.
Okay.
Um, thank you, gentlemen. Again, thanks, Eric.
All right, take care, guys.
Thank you.
That's all right.
And then just two other quick items. Um, the State Health Department requires a, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, a more supply plan. Our last one was twenty sixteen. I just got a letter indicating it, it's gonna be due in a year. So our next update, where Brian, that's where we'll, we'll project, you know, populations, current flows. So our next update where, Brian, that's where we'll project, you know, populations, current flows and then future flows. And then any other improvements we need to do, deficiencies we might have. So that'll be quite a project to put together.
It's worth saying too, I mentioned to Tom, let's say yesterday or today, yesterday. We had done a tabletop exercise with respect to emergency preparedness yesterday or day before. Anyway, the topic this year was wildfires. And during that conversation, it was the wildfire over near the school was the whole scenario. And one of the things I started thinking about is all of our wells are in one little bucket. If we had a major issue, tanker spill, wildfire flood, whatever, we probably had a lot of, feel a lot of hurt. That we might consider when we do this plan, just looking at other parts of town. If we dip back behind Chestnut Ridge Reservoir or whatever, but just kind of somewhere. Put it on your radar that we do not want to build a well next to Herbstrom. I know that's the ideal thing, everyone wants to go to the same aquifer. I just would say we look somewhere else as we start looking, maybe as we're looking at the plan, maybe we hire somebody down the road and, you know, have them look around town and see what, or look at the old geological survey that we had.
Yeah, there's, people have some database of various and probably aquifers are probably mapped.
Sure.
So.
The other thing I'll say, we have an aquifer protection ordinance that doesn't need to be used anymore. We don't, we don't have the same aquifers anymore, right? That was repealed. We used to have, we used to have an aquifer ordinance, we do have one.
Okay, I'm not.
Fair enough, I just wanted, I guess it just kind of came up today, looking at it. I'll take that out later, but the big thing for me is I just would really be opposed to trying to put a well in the same aquifer over there with all the other wells.
And my last item, so fifteen Great Pasture Road, which is the development in Dan Barry at the town line. That has a two-acre portion of it in the town of Bethel. They have applied to both the Dan Barry EIC, and I think they at least contacted inland wetlands here in Bethel. So I sent an email back to Dan Barry, just asking them if the property has access to Dan Barry sewers. Or are they still interested in an interlocal agreement with us? They indicated they would still be interested. So no progress on it, but I at least propose the question back to them again. That's it.
Cool. MIU replacements?
We're only down to eighty-five, we're making seven eighty-five this past month. Without a lot of door, door tacks. Trying to leave it open for weekends, maybe we can take one weekend and get a few of them done. But it's just, it's slowed down.
Okay. Do you see capital projects status?
All right, Bergstrom, where the pay level's at about ninety percent. Typical work that's been going on, installation of chemical room conduits, electrical conduit junction boxes, wiring. The iWash stations are done, laboratory furniture and equipment. Bathroom fixtures, the fence fabric and gates are just about complete. We did a field visit to the site integrator to take a look at what they're putting together for like the SCADA system for the project. And they did a really nice job with it at this point. And they are, again, trying to get everything done so that we can get ready for startup. The last I heard, and I don't know if it's still going to be, but they had the vendor penciled in for the twenty-second, which is a week from Monday. So if they can get the chemical pump testing done that they need to and the other incidentals that need to get done to be ready for them, we should have that. But till I, till I know, I don't know.
Okay, from the state.
I haven't heard anything back yet, so. And the other project SCADA, we just got a review from, from an attorney on the contract. He had a couple of minor edits to it. I don't think there's any game changers there. So I'll make modifications and get the notice of award and the contract to NIC Systems for signatures to get back to us. So hopefully we'll get that ball rolling here shortly. When I was up at their office, they're still totally, you know, geared up to do the project and ready to go, so that was a good sign. And that's it.
Okay, be fast. Nothing, nothing new.
All right.
You still see your report?
This past month, we had one service leak on Judd Avenue up at the intersection. Midway has started this morning, they did a wet tap in middle of three oh two. Probably be in three oh two one more day, then they'll be off into Midway, working their way up the hill. We had some, we have one pump out of service right now at car park one. It seems to be overheated. So we pulled it today and we sent that out just to be going, just to make sure everything's fluid. But we're still operating on pump one. We pumped and cleaned the wet wells in our quarterly motion that we've been doing. And the last thing is the paving downtown here is, the four roads that are done, they've done it. Our guys have been out there doing the water boxes, the vanholt covers, make sure they don't get picked over. And that's really all I have.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Just going back to the MIUs, I guess my only link, let's not let it creep back up.
Oh, no, no, I.
Yeah, I was like, yeah, I don't want to. We're at ninety-five, then we're at a hundred and ten, and then before you know it, you're in a position or we're not. You guys did a good job again, it's under control, you just have to see us keep it at a much lower offer.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. Have you put something in your newsletter about it?
I was just thinking about it today, I was going to ask about it, put it again, we haven't done it in a while. We have done it, but we'll do it again.
Yeah, if they have an E on their bill, then it's an estimate. And I'd say, hey, just so that you don't get too high of a bill, too high of an estimate, let us in so we can change the MIU. I mean, it could be lower too, but.
Jack, no way, then they'll call you.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I think when you had the promotion of trying to get that signed on, I heard you say something about the invoices. I'm pretty sure you gave the invoice amount for the previous minutes.
Oh, did I?
One thirty-three.
Wow, thank you, I did.
I heard it.
Because I did do one thirty.
And that's what I wrote down, one thirty.
First is two thirty-nine?
It's two thirty-nine.
Wow, so why do we, why do we correct that motion then? First, I guess technically, do I have to do a motion that we consider?
I think you do an amended motion, that you amend the motion first. For what we did originally.
Probably, right, technically first, okay. So I move that we do a motion to reconsider the invoice. Do I have a second? All in favor of opening up for reconsideration? Say aye. I will amend the original motion that we voted on, and the amount is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven, excuse me, two hundred and thirty-nine, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, fifty-two cents. Okay, we have a second, all in favor, denounce, say aye. Aye, motion now carries. I get that right? I'm losing my mind, it's an easy mistake, I guess, okay. Go ahead.
We had a fire commission meeting last night, and the firemen were asking, who's responsible for painting fire hydrants?
Good question. He is.
They have offered. The fire department has offered to paint the hydrants. We have no control over what goes out of aquarium. It would have to get permission from aquarium, but the caucer, I bought the paint for him. I bought the equipment for him, whatever they need, and they're doing it as like a project in a probationary. So they're going around painting.
Came up last night, the hydrants sort of needed a lot more work of scraping and.
The caucer there?
Yeah.
Well, he should open his big mouth. He rattles about everything else.
Came in today talking about the paint, so I'm assuming they're doing it.
Yeah, no, they already bought in the paint.
Yeah, they got some done, but you said some of the hydrants really need a lot of scraping and so I said I would bring it up and see who's responsible for it.
I don't think that we are responsible, I don't know. But the last time they were done was done by, I forget the name of it, the Seabees. It's someone had done a, like it's like an Eagle Scout. Charlie Reed's son took that task on and painted all the hydrants, that was probably about eighteen years ago. So Bill came to me, he said, what can we do with the hydrants? I says, if I buy the product for you, if your people want to pave it, you don't come home. He had a committee and a crew that was going to paint the hydrants, then they found out how hard it is.
Yeah.
So as far as the responsibilities, it's the town.
It would be the town.
But we can, we can look for help through Eagle Scout Projects, Fire Department.
How many hydrants do we have?
Uh, it's about two thirty, I think.
I mean, they don't have to be a work apart, and it's like when they paint guardrails, right?
Yeah, paint, it's not like a Picasso.
That's my point.
I mean, why do we need to worry about sanding them all down, all this stuff, like just paint them, that's wonderful.
That's the point, and try to, try to talk to Mr. Caucer about that.
When I was on public works, we used to pickle the guardrails before we painted them, see if they were free.
Yeah.
We used to use pickle juice, they would have a pickle juice, pickle juice on the new ones, and then after that dried, then they would have us paint them. That was a bust in public works.
Okay, but that's, that's where we may go off for.
Awesome.
ROTC.
Yeah, yeah. And by the way, we had, we had a ton of students coming out working on the cemetery streets. So yeah, there's, there's opportunities for them to do something like that. And I just double check, they have to be red, right? We can't have people doing anything weird with them or strikes or.
You're getting into, I mean, there's one down on the road they just paved there, Oxford Street, where it's painted like a dalmatian. I don't even want to get into the people with that, I mean, remember that was the big deal in seventeen, nineteen seventy-six for the Turf Centennial? Everybody was painting hydrants, like.
Right, look. Dalmatians?
Anything, raincoats, everything. What I told them is, I want red hydrants with white tops, because they stand out for, with the white tops. I don't even want to get into, usually with the hydrants, different colors be certain gallons per minute. So at this point, let's not even get into that, because things can change. But red hydrants with white tops. And then that's all about it. I bought him eight gallons and brushed over.
And he offered to paint them, he agreed. And he agreed.
Oh, yeah, he was all over it.
Okay.
I'll paint the one on my street. So it's brand new, I'd be happy to.
Kelly has the paint.
No, he's driving off a plane.
Somebody came up to me recently, I'm not sure which development they live in, but do we have a lot of hydrants that are owned by like HOAs and developments?
Yes.
And they maintain them supposedly?
There's, well, they're supposed to, I don't know where they get painted now, but up at the summit, I think there's twelve hydrants in the summit, two complex. You have two hydrants up at Justin Village. They're looking to have their own people, men, and maintain the hydrants. Plum trees, those are all private hydrants, plum trees. Kingswood, you know, places like that. Where they, usually where they own the main, they own the hydrants. If we take over the main, which we've been doing lately, then the hydrants are ours. So they're our responsibility to flush and to maintain if they're broken, it's our responsibility.
I mentioned too, speaking of flush, I mentioned that we do need to do something next year.
We do, as soon as we have the water, you're right, we do.
Okay, because we were talking about that, we need to get those water levels up and be thinking about that.
Yeah, and this isn't happening here unfortunately.
No, I know, but we, but, but I, you know, going through the wildfire thing yesterday. Our water levels are pretty low, and it's just something we need to be concerned about and making sure we. All right, any other questions? I would take it, second, all in favor? Aye, you're adjourned.